Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Bartlet.
Here.
Commissioner Lodge.
Here.
Chair Justice, absent.
We have preliminary matters.
I'd like to amend to call Commissioner Jacobs.
Here.
Thank you. Preliminary matters, action on the review of the following minutes and resolutions. Draft minutes of July 7th, Resolution 013-11 relating to 1547 Shoreline Drive. Draft minutes of July 14th, 2011, Resolution 04-11 relating to 917 Paseo Ferrello Road, and Resolution 015-11 on 2547 Cliff Road. Any additions, corrections on the minutes? Commissioner Bartlet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the Planning Commission minutes of July 7th, on page 3, directly below the motion, there seems to be a statement that is left off the end, so hopefully that's been addressed.
Yes, that was stricken out. Thank you.
Okay, and then I had a question. I think that's it, thank you.
Any other? Yes, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I kind of wrote down what I thought I said back then, but you have something that's appropriate, that'll work for that paragraph?
Yes, Commissioner Jordan.
Okay, I'm good. We'll see that in the final then. Thank you. Happy to be singled out as having said nothing.
All right, then Commissioner Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be abstaining from the July 7th vote. However, when we take the motion as a whole, just please record that I'll be abstaining from the 7th.
All right, thank you.
No noted.
All right, then.
Madam Chair, I did have another note on the next page, if I might.
Pardon me?
I did have another note on the next page, if I might.
Oh, certainly.
On the, on page 4, where...
And you're talking about July 7th.
The July 7th. I'm sorry. And on page 4, where the last paragraph before we get down to the administrative agenda, where we talked about what the commissioners' comments were, missing there, I think, is one that we all talked about, and that had something to do with greater integration with both the nonprofit and business community into the city processes. I think many of us talked for a period of time on involving both business groups, local business groups, and nonprofits such as the Red Cross to a greater deal with this process. So if we could just add in a sentence that paraphrases that Ms. Rodriguez said would be great. Thanks.
Any other additions, corrections? Not a motion would be in order to approve those items.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to approve those items. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Ms. Jacobs is abstaining on the July 7th minutes, is that correct? All right, thank you. All right, that brings us to requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items. Ms. DeBusk.
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add, all right. And any announcements or appeals?
None.
Okay. All right, this is the time that the public may make comments on any items that are not before the Planning Commission today. Is there anyone that wished to do so? All right, not seeing anyone come forward, I will close that part of the meeting, and we'll move on to item 3, which is a new item, application of Trish Allen, Suzanne Elidge Planning and Permitting Services, agent for the Hutton Foundation, 602 Anacapa Street, CM Zone, general plan designation, general office, major public institutional. We have the staff report, please, Ms. Regal.
Good afternoon, Chair Lodge and fellow Planning Commissions. I apologize for my voice, and I'll try to be as loud as I can. The project is located at 602 Anacapa Street. It's also known as the Anacota Building. It's located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Anacapa and Cota Streets. It's also located in what we call the central business district. The required approvals for the project is for development plan approval for 3,626 square feet of new non-residential floor area, and a recommendation to City Council for final community priority designation for a total of 2,671 square feet of floor area. The difference in those two numbers is approximately 955 square feet that is to be allocated out of the small addition category as described in the zoning ordinance under 2887-300. We have reviewed the findings that we have in the staff report, and we have made some changes which we have distributed to the staff and the planning commissioners. Most of them have to do with a grammatical issue. However, I'd like to point your attention to revised finding number 3, where in the second paragraph, we have stricken out the word "as designed" before the words "has been designed," as it's repetitive. And then the more substantial change was to finding number 6, that you can see on the screen here, that the project will generate new peak hour trips that will not result in an increase in trips at impacted intersections and will not involve a significant incremental increase in the area traffic, as discussed in Section 7C and D of the staff report. Also, I would like to point out, in the conditions of approval, in paragraph 1 and in condition G3B, there is a choice whether it goes to Planning Commission or Staff Hearing Officer, and the word "Staff Hearing Officer" was not stricken in those two locations. I'm going to let the applicant do most of the presentation here, but staff would recommend approval of the project, making the revised findings, as discussed here in the meeting today, and subject to the conditions of approval as amended in Exhibit A of the staff report, and make a recommendation to City Council for final community priority designation for the 2,671 square feet of floor area. With that, we also do have Chelsea Swanson, if you have questions about traffic and parking from transportation.
That concludes your staff report.
Yes, I'm sorry, that concludes my staff report.
Thank you. Before we begin with commission questions, is there, are there any ex parte communications or recusals that need to be noted? Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Prior to our site visit Tuesday of this week, I had had a previous opportunity courtesy of Antioch President Nancy Lefort to tour the site when it was really just a shell of a building, so not what we were able to see this week, several weeks prior. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Any questions for staff at this point? Mr. Bartlet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On page 4 of the staff report, up at the top, the second line, it's making reference to the development plan approval by the Historic Landmarks Commission. I'm assuming that should be Planning Commission, right?
This is talking about a different phase of, Phase 2 of a project that was reviewed by ABR. It actually should refer to the Architectural Board of Review. They had originally come in with a smaller project that wouldn't have required Planning Commission approval, and that was called the Phase 2 project. They have opted to not go with Phase 2 and jump to the Phase 3 project, which is an additional 980 square feet of internal floor area and retention of 1,691 square feet of mezzanine area that is in the garage. And I believe the applicant will show you more about the floor plan.
No, but my question is, this is ABR, not HLC.
Correct, it's Architectural Board of Review.
Right.
It's the only place it didn't get caught.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
One other quick question relative to the conditions of approval. I know on recent projects where there's a history of prior conditions of approval, are those previous conditions of approval when the project was done in 1986 still in effect, and then these conditions are in addition to that?
Condition G1 talks about prior conditions, and these conditions are in addition to the conditions identified in Planning Commission Resol 00986.
Great, thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions? Commissioner Jacobs, I'm sorry, Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make sure I understood the changes you made as results, the traffic paragraph, and the reference somewhere in the staff report to an adjustment of class starting hours. The finding that you ended up with there in number 6 is still separate from the issue and the offer of Antioch to stagger their classes to non-peak times. You, this paragraph is applicable without the adjustment of those starting times. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, if not, oh, Ms. Jacobs, Commissioner Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a question since we have traffic staff here. The finding we're being asked to make, that it does not have a significant unmitigated adverse impact on city traffic, it will generate new peak hour trips, and we're not proposing any traffic improvements for the project. Is there any traffic improvement that could be made, or are we really just fine with the way this intersection is going to work with the additional trips?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chelsea Swanson, Transportation Planning. There are, I believe, 13 a.m. peak hour trips anticipated and 16 p.m. peak hour trips anticipated. And looking at the location of the site, and how many different ways people could come to and from, and coming up with distributions, we were confident that they wouldn't be adding trips to impacted intersections, so we didn't take a step to look at improving any intersection because we were not seeing an impact to any intersection, so does that...
Okay, so the distribution of it and the number of trips is not going to present a problem?
Correct, that's what we found.
That's mine. Good, okay. Thanks.
Thank you. If there are no more questions from the Planning Commissioners, I'd like to ask the applicant to come forward and make their presentation. You have up to 15 minutes for that.
My name is Trish Allen.
This one?
Where they call. Good afternoon, Chair Lodge and Commissioners. My name is Trish Allen with Suzanne Elidge Planning and Permitting. I do have a very brief presentation because I think that the project is not straightforward, but would first like to introduce Nancy Lefort, who most of you met at the site visit this week, president of Antioch University. She has a few opening comments to make, and then I will continue on.
President Lefort.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you very much for letting me make a few remarks today, some of which I may have already made, but I want to say them without construction noise around me, I think. Antioch University Santa Barbara has actually been in the Santa Barbara community for 34 years, and I wondered why, when I first took over the presidency a year ago, why no one knew Antioch was here. And I discovered that it was really because, until four years ago, our campus was actually a satellite of our Los Angeles campus. And because of that, it had no president, no board of trustees, and really no involvement as a higher education institution should have in terms of becoming part of an integration in a community. So because of that, now we have a president, we have a distinguished group of board of trustees, and now it's time for Antioch to really take its place as a member of this community. It's an institution with a distinguished history, having been founded in 1852 by Horace Mann, who some of you may know was the father of progressive education and really public education in the country. And we're a small campus now of not quite 400 students. And last August, it became clear to us that we had grown out of our space on Garden Street, on the corner of De La Guerra and Garden, actually just about three blocks from the new campus. And we surveyed all of our constituents, boards, students, members of the community, and everyone wanted us to remain in downtown Santa Barbara. Even the mayor wanted us to remain in downtown Santa Barbara. This was right about the time that Fielding was planning a move to Golita. And we didn't know whether it would be possible for us to stay in Santa Barbara because there aren't really a lot of buildings suitable for a adult campus university. But after an extensive search, and really the stars lining up, we identified the Anacota Plaza Building, and with the incredibly unique and unprecedented partnership with the Hutton Parker Foundation, Tom Parker's here today, we had the opportunity to renovate this building and make it a vital part of the Santa Barbara community. As sure you know, it's been really empty for several years. Everyone referred to it as the mattress factory. I don't know how long ago the mattress company moved out, but it was an opportunity to take a vacant building and to really integrate it into the community and have a presence in the community and enhance the downtown corridor. We believe it'll bring new vitality to that area, Santa Barbara. I can tell you that the neighbors, Archrock, for instance, Archrock Restaurant is thrilled to have us move into the neighborhood and hopefully, and have our students eat in their restaurant, and they will actually be, we're working on a contract with them, to have a concession upstairs for our students so they don't have to go to the restaurant. And many of the neighbors in the community have expressed interest in coming to have lunch, to buy a quick lunch. So I think it's going to enhance the community. We're going to have a 125-seat community multipurpose room that I'm very much hoping the community will use for events, lectures, art exhibits. Basically, we're looking toward a bright new future in this area. I can tell you that the timeline for this project has, was really out of our control. Without going into all of the details, it was not a timeline that I, as president of a university, would have chosen. And because it was outside of our control, we have had to really push to be able to financially do this, to be able to bring it about in a way in which it wasn't disruptive to our students, et cetera. And I know you have probably everyday projects that have that kind of timeline, et cetera. I'm sure you've heard this before, but I just wanted to tell you how excited we are about a future in downtown Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bating. So I wanted to give a brief, if my battery didn't go out on me here. I may have to move to the table down here. Will that work? So I can, or Bob, would you do the slides for me? Just use the down arrow. That'd be great. So I have an aerial up on the screen. The building is at the corner, and now my pointer doesn't work. Of Cota, you could see the little Google locator there. So this is the Anacota Building at the corner of Cota and Anacapa Street. Adjacent to it, to the east is the commuter parking lot, and across the street... Thank you. Thank you, Julie. Across the street is Lot 10, public parking Lot 10. And at this location, there are some parking places that you observed when we were at the site visit. Okay, Bob. So just a photo, again, from Google Maps. I could tell it was a busy Saturday, Farmer's Market Day, but here's the corner of the building at Cota and Anacapa. Go ahead. And the Cota Street frontage. The Anacapa Street frontage. Further down. Keep going, Bob. These are the applications that are described in the staff report, a development plan to allow the additional floor area construction. As Ms. Regal noted, the floor area does exceed the allowance from the small and minor addition categories necessitating a request for community priority. There were some additions that were done previously to the building that consumed, I should say, left a balance of about 955 square feet. So we do have the preliminary designation from City Council. Should we receive the development plan approval today from the commission, we will be returning to council to get that final designation, and going back to ABR to get a final approval for some of the minor exterior alterations that we're doing to the building. Most of the work is happening inside the building, is proposed inside the building. Go ahead, Bob. So just to touch on community priority, I think everybody here is pretty familiar, but this project absolutely meets the definition of a community priority project. Antioch is an institution of higher learning for Santa Barbara residents and folks that live in the area, provides an opportunity to gain knowledge, skills, and good habits. As such, Antioch contributes significantly to the general welfare of the community, and that's a pretty important part of meeting the definition. Thanks, Bob. So I have some perspectives drawn by Kupiak Architects. This is sort of a southeast-facing on Cota Street. Go ahead. Again, another straight-on view, and leave it on that one for a second. So this is the area of the exterior work that we've proposed and gone through concept review at ABR. It involves an elevator on the side of the structure, an elevator tower. We have received the positive comments from ABR, and you know, some additional landscape comments as well. I believe those minutes are in your packet. Okay? And just another perspective to see the area of work here on the exterior of the building facing Cota Street. Okay? I'm not going to try to say this word. This is a bird's eye view, if you will, taking the top of the structure off, and it's not, it's really hard to see in this resolution. I apologize. It looked a lot better on my screen. But you can see the entry lobby in this area, stair going up, the student learning center and library, and along the sides are classrooms and offices down here on the lower floor. So this is the new second floor, if you will, that's proposed, and we'll see it a little bit better in some of the other interior renderings. And so at this point, you're open to below. You're looking down onto the first floor lobby area. Did anyone have a question? No? So since the proposed work is occurring, you know, within the building and creating a new floor, I thought it would be interesting to see the renderings that Kupiak's office has prepared. So here, you've got the main entry lobby with your back towards the corner. Go ahead. And just the different stairs going up to the library, you could see, this is the part where it's really nice, the feeling of community and campus within the building. Just other views, just go quickly through these. More of the library above. And this is the multipurpose room that Nancy referred to earlier. And then I just ended with the top view again. This is the multipurpose room area over here. So again, I'm really excited. Staff has been amazing in terms of processing our application to meet the client's needs, the university's needs, to get into the building as quickly as possible because of all these different moving parts and circumstances. So that concludes my presentation, and we're here with questions. I've got the architect here, I've got Scott Shell here from ATE, if you have any questions on his analysis. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Any questions? Ms. Larsen, Commissioner Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a quick question, and it's in regard to, you know, I think having this downtown, you're going to attract more enrollment. Is there, what is the ceiling for enrollment for Antioch in terms of any one-time occupancy of the building?
In terms of a code occupancy ceiling, I'd have to direct that question to the architect, but our enrollment expectation is about 400.
Oh, okay.
About 400 students.
Thanks.
We're probably more like 375 right now for the next semester.
Thank you. Commissioner Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are you keeping the current building, or does that go away and you only will be using this building now? The one on Garden Street? What happens to...
The one on Garden Street? Oh, no, the, all the faculty and staff and students will be operating out of it. There's no offices left in the other building.
And anticipated opening date for this one?
October 1st? So October 3rd. So let me explain that the proposed third floor, which is the existing second floor, faculty, I'm sorry, administrative staff have moved into the building. And on the very top floor are six residential units. They are not condos. Those are, the tenants are still there and renting, renting their homes from, I guess, the Hutton Parker Foundation.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Well, I have one request to speak from the public, and there may be others, so Steve Cushman has submitted a request to speak for him. Mr. Cushman.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Lodge, members of the Planning Commission. I'm a big fan of Antioch. I think it's fantastic, the partnership between the Hutton Parker Foundation and Antioch, keeping the college downtown is good for economically, good for all of us, and good to have the students downtown lending an air of excitement. So I know it's a short window that you have to work on to make this happen, but I hope you'll do all that you can to make them able to open October 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cushman. Is there anyone else that wished to comment in the public? All right, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission and commission comments. Commissioner Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I've, since this first came before us, I've been a fan of it. I really like this project. I support this vibrant institutional use of downtown space, and I can really see the students working and bringing some life into this part of downtown, so it has my full support. It's good infill and makes good use of the zone of benefit parking, which helps me with any traffic impacts. So I think nap time is over for the old mattress building, and you have my full support, enthusiastic support, and what an excellent, brilliant partnership. So thanks also to the Hutton Foundation. Thank you.
Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I'd just add to that and go down my list, fully, again, fully support that, and I think really the applicant team has hit all these bullets. It's an appropriate reuse of an existing building and location. It's, on paper, overparked, and on paper is never good, but it has the added benefit of being right adjacent to additional parking resources if paper doesn't work out well. As Mr. Cushman said, it's a great function and type of business to be in a downtown location. There's a certain efficiency and economy gains to combining the remaining two phases. And I heard, on the walkthrough the other day too, I heard similar to this phrase that Madam President used, and that was "to take place as a member of the community." You talked a little bit about that the other day too, and I'm encouraged by seeing the President of the Chamber here. I think the downtown organization would also be a welcoming supporter of this group. Both of those groups hold mixers at various places now and then, and for those of us who are just used to the mattress shop, I would have never known about the second floor and what a beautiful jewel that is in downtown... about the second floor and what a beautiful jewel that is in downtown Santa Barbara. And I would encourage you to keep holding that "taking place as a member of community" in your heart and reaching out to some of those groups and finding ways to get them involved and to share your story with the rest of the downtown and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Start at the other end of the desk. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'm so excited, I'm not quite sure where to start, because to have a premier adult learning organization in our community, want to stay not only in Santa Barbara, but even move closer to downtown, and with the very special opportunity, Mr. Parker, that you with the Parker-Hutton Foundation has really afforded not only Antioch, but the entire community, I thank you for that. This is really groundbreaking, I think, on behalf of you as a leader in the community, and then Antioch stepping up to the next level of engagement and community service. Because I see from our site visit on Tuesday what a phenomenal community resource Antioch is going to become that it has not had the opportunity to be. With this 125-seat multipurpose room, I think, you know, there are numerous opportunities that I think Dr. Leford and others are going to be looking into. To have an educational institution more closely engaged with our community, and I think that includes City College, I believe there's a very special liaison program there that's going to be a win-win, I think sends a very strong message in terms of lifelong learning, because I know you have, I think it's predominantly adult students at the school. I believe you have about 80% of your faculty are from our community. This is terrific as well, because that's a win-win. Both the school is benefiting from the kind of talent and scholarship that we have in the community, and those in the community who have this to give have a place to give and contribute. So I think this is going to be a real role model for what we can do and what we can offer going forward. And, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to make the motion when the time is right.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Larson?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Well, everybody's said pretty much my list, but I do want to, I do want to say how synergistic a vision that two organizations, the Parker-Hutton Foundation and Antioch, can come together with a convergence of vision for downtown and for, to benefit each person who can come into contact. It's such a great use of space. And to keep the residential component is outstanding. I mean, it's what we ask for all over, from everyone, and you're doing it. I really appreciate that. And so thank you for that vision, and thank you for supporting that vision. And I'm glad that Antioch didn't just close up shop and go away. I think you're going to prosper downtown, and we'll all be better educated for the experience of having a sustainable campus within walking distance of perhaps your home. So instead of having to drive many, many miles round trip and use difficult parking and all that jazz, we get it right here. That's like being the spoiled prince. So here we are, folks. We can all have a very well-educated populace. And the inclusion of the resource room that holds 125 people, as Commissioner Jordan spoke of, that's outstanding. And the fact that we have more space to bring community together, including cultural, you know, cultural displays, art, meetings, foundation meetings. Space is premium for nonprofits and expensive, so I'm sure that that will be used very regularly. So I'll be happy to second the motion when it's made, since I got beat out of making the motion. But anyway, I fully support this project, and I'm very, very happy with it. And I can't wait for it to go to City Council and see that smiling mayor cut that ribbon, or whoever's going to do it, maybe it's President Leford on opening day. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Bartlet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'm really happy to see this project back. I know that we got a glimpse of it a year or two ago when we were looking at conceptual plans for the Foothill Triangle project, and Antioch was anticipating moving to our furthest periphery, albeit in the city. It's really not in the city itself. It's within the city limits. And I'm so happy to see it actually remain in the central business district and move even closer to State Street and some of the other satellite facilities such as Brooks. I think there will be a great synergy between those. And I think this particular application also is a great example of how to repurpose buildings in our downtown. I think the future growth of Santa Barbara is going to be more about repurposing of what we have than building new. And I think this is really a shining example of what can be done. And I think it really exemplifies the spirit that has been put forward, I think, in Plan Santa Barbara, where we're trying to put more or better contents within the building shells and the mass that we currently have and make better use of it. So I think this really is a shining star for that, and I can't wait for it to open, and at least I won't have to wait very long. So that's a good thing. So I congratulate you, and I think that your whole team has done an incredible job in terms of coordinating with the city on how to do a project like this fast-track, because it is a very difficult process with all the steps that you have to go through. So I'll definitely be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bartlet. Well, I hope everybody on the team is just glowing, all these glowing remarks with which I concur. It certainly is an addition to creative use of existing interior space. To add, there is one negative note. We have a letter from Paula Westbury, who does not approve of the project. But I need to mention that for the record. All right, Commissioner Schwartz, you wanted to make the motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On behalf of the Planning Commission, I move that we support the revised findings, as we've received today, Roman numeral nine findings, development plan approval findings for 602 Anacapa Street.
I second the motion.
All right. We have a motion made and seconded to approve the findings, the revised findings for this project. Anything else from the commissioners?
Do we need to make specific findings for the 3,626 square feet of non-residential development, or is that just covered in it?
Ms. Regal?
Madam Chair, fellow commissioners, Larson, the findings that were contained in the staff report make those findings for that 3,626 square feet. However, you do need to make a recommendation to City Council for the final community priority designation.
Then I would respectfully add to the maker of the motion that we...
Agreed. Thank you. All right. So then on the motion to approve the findings, the revised findings, and to recommend that the council make the final designation, the community priority square footage, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so ordered. Your project is approved. And it is appealable within 10 days from today. Thank you, Mr. Bartlet. I know I'm not supposed to do this, but I just want to thank you so very much, and I hope you'll all come to the grand opening celebration. I want you all...
Who ask us, we'll be there.
Okay. All right, the next item is item four, which is an environmental hearing on 1820 to 1826 De La Vina Street. And this is a hearing being held at the request of Don Barnier, who is here. May we have the staff report, please?
Good afternoon, council members and, I mean, sorry, planning commission and... Good afternoon, Kelly Brodessen, Assistant Planner with Community Development. This is an environmental hearing for a proposed project at 1820, 1822 and 1826 De La Vina Street, requested by Don Barnier, residing at 1825 De La Vina Street, across the street from the proposed project site. The purpose of this environmental hearing is to receive comments from public agencies, any interested parties, and members of the public, and the planning commission. Here's a map of the project's site, and it will be three lots that will be merged to create one lot of 28,350 square feet. It is mid-block on De La Vina Street between Pedragosa and Islay Streets. Highway 101 is to the southwest, Mission is to the northwest, and Chapala is to the northeast. And here's an aerial photo, and I've outlined the overall project site once the lots are merged. And you can see the existing structures on site. And the existing structures will all be demolished, which include three houses, two of which are duplexes, two garages, and one shed. And the proposed project is a 40-unit residential care facility for the elderly, consisting of a two-story building, 24,000 square feet, with a 2,200-square-foot cellar for food storage, laundry, and mechanical equipment. The majority of activities will be focused within the building's internal common spaces, including a kitchen, a dining area, wellness center, activity spaces, sunrooms, bathrooms, and service areas. The project also includes 20 parking spaces, 16 which are covered and four are uncovered. Here's the site plan of the project. And to add to the description, each of the residential units would range in size from about 300 square feet to about 376 square feet. Each unit would have a private sink, a studio area, living area, and in most cases would share a bathroom with the adjacent unit. Grading would consist of approximately 1,900 cubic yards of excavation under the main building footprint and about 1,700 cubic yards outside of the building footprint. And this is just a summary. There's a much more detailed summary in the actual initial study document that was provided to you. The purpose of today's hearing is to conduct an analysis of the project and its impacts to determine whether the project may have significant effect on the environment. We also would like to identify any measures that mitigate project impacts to a less-than-significant level. And the initial study that I've prepared includes a project description, an environmental setting, what's there now, potential environmental impacts, and a brief explanation of those impacts, mitigation measures for any of the significant effects, and also a discussion on the project's consistency with local plans and policies. For this project, staffs conducted the environmental review as required and determined that there were no significant unavoidable impacts. There were some potentially significant but mitigable impacts identified in the initial study, and those were related to biological resources, cultural resources, and noise. Additionally, there are some less-than-significant or Class III impacts with recommended mitigation in the areas of air quality and cultural resources. The conclusion of the initial study was that the implementation of the mitigation measures, all potentially significant impacts can be reduced to a less-than-significant level. And to outline the next step for the project, today, as you know, is the environmental hearing to take comments on the draft initial study and the mitigated negative declaration. And public comments will continue to be accepted through tomorrow, Friday, at the close of business, August 12th. At this time, staff has received the hearing request from Ms. Barnier and a comment letter from the APCD, both of which are attached to the staff report. We just received a letter from Ms. Westbury also. And then following the end of the public comment period, staff will draft a final mitigated negative declaration, and that will include responses to any public comments we receive and any comments we received from you today as a commission. Then on September 8th, the planning commission is scheduled to hold a public hearing to consider the final mitigated negative declaration, as well as consider the conditional use permit for the residential care facility in a residential zone. And just to reiterate, the public comment period ends tomorrow, Friday, August 12th. Please send any comments you may have to the city of Santa Barbara to my attention, or you can email them to me at the email address shown on the screen. And this concludes staff presentation, and I can answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brodessen. Any questions for Ms. Brodessen? I'm not seeing anyone. I do want to point out that this, no formal action on the development proposal or environmental document will take place at this hearing. This is a discussion of the adequacy of the MND. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a question. In response to the County Air Pollution Control District, Ms. Brodessen, do we have, is it appropriate at this point to have any formal response or comments from city staff in terms of the suggested permit conditions, one through three? This is Exhibit C in our package.
Ms. Brodessen?
Chair Lodge and Commissioner Schwartz, that is correct. What we'll do next is take the letter from APCD and incorporate an actual, let's see, attachment to the document you already have, and respond to each comment, and actually add those as conditions of approval to the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff from the commission? Right if not, Don Barnier, if you would like to come forward and tell us about your
Good afternoon, Chairman Lodge and Commissioners. Don Barnier, I'm a resident directly across the street from the proposed project. I have three major topics of concern regarding this project. Number one, being traffic. Number two, parking. And number three, noise. Currently, I have done some review of the existing documents, and the traffic assessment report dated August 22nd, 2008, I feel is outdated and does not accurately reflect the current existing average daily vehicular volume at this time. I've owned my property across the street for six years now, coming on six years this November, and I can tell you that between now and three years ago, the traffic is not the same on De La Vina as it was when this report was submitted. Secondly, as we all know, the intersection at De La Vina and Figueroa is the most dangerous intersection in Santa Barbara. Another concern of mine is increased traffic volume traveling down De La Vina, further impacting intersections going more towards the north part of De La Vina. This proposed project will have three shifts a day, 7:00 AM, 3:00 PM, and 11:00 PM. Supposedly, in the documents that I read, one was conflicting with the other. One said there will be a maximum of 12 employees per shift. One said 13, so I don't know if it's 12 or 13. But at any rate, we will have at 7:00 AM 13 employees departing the project, 13 employees arriving to work their shift. And that will happen again at 3:00 PM and again at 11:00 PM. This is all within a 24-hour period. So if the number is 12, let's just use the number 10 to make it easy. So we're going to have 60 employees coming and departing within a 24-hour period. My final point with regard to traffic is the June 23rd, 2011 initial study environmental checklist, it states that activities and transportation to medical services and outdoor activities is part of the regular daily program. This, I think, will further impact the vehicular volume. I will point out, in that same study, there was a paragraph prior to that states that "since residents rarely go outside, activity areas will be focused within internal common spaces." Common interior spaces available to residents, well, it gives it square footage. But at any rate, it's basically stating, since they rarely go outside, activities and services will be provided to the residents on the property. So I found those two items conflicting. One stating, they rarely go outside, and they're not going to be going anywhere, but then they're going to have daily activities on a regular basis, on a daily basis. Okay, my next issue of concern is parking. The proposed project states it will have 20 parking spots on site. Two of those parking spots are designated handicapped. So in essence, they are reserved. So in essence, they are reserved. Of the rest of the parking spots, 18 of them, six of them are only able to accommodate compact cars. So you basically have, what do we have? 12 left? We have 13 employees coming. I'm assuming they're going to park on-site? Not sure where they're going to park. So another issue too is, I know from my personal experience, when my mother was in a care facility like this, even though she didn't drive a car, she didn't have a license to drive, she wanted her car on-site with her. And the reason she did was she didn't want to give up that independence. She still owned the car, but when I went to go visit her, I would take her out in her car on errands and medical appointments and such. So it's very conceivable that one of the residents, or two, or three, or four, or five, we don't know at this point, may opt to bring in their own vehicle. And I think they should have that opportunity to do so if they're, you know, paying for a residential facility like that. Another concern I have is the driveway entrance to the property will consume 24 feet of already street-side parking. Next to the driveway is a proposed fire hydrant. That will consume another 6 feet of restricted parking. So we have 30 feet of parking that will be taken up for the new driveway and the proposed fire hydrant. Let's see. I have, I live in the area. I walk my dog daily. I've had an opportunity to really, really investigate the parking situation on De Lavina, all the way from Mission down to Correo. And currently, the situation on De Lavina, which as we all know is a one-way, southeast-bound, two-lane street, there is no parking on the north side of the street on Wednesday from 9:00 a.m. to noon due to street sweeping. No parking on the entire south side on Thursday from 9:00 a.m. till noon due to street sweeping. There is 90-minute parking on both sides of the street from Mission to Pedregosa. So that's limited parking there. There's 90-minute parking on both sides of the street from Ariaga to Mitchell-Terrena. There's 90-minute parking on both sides of the street from Sola to Victoria. And there's 90-minute parking on the south side of the street from Victoria to Annapremoo. 50% of De Lavina is red zone on both sides of the street between Valerio and Ariaga. So as you can imagine, this is a residential area where residents are utilizing what limited parking spaces we have already and with lots enforcements there already, with red zones, street sweeping, 90-minute parking. This type of facility, because residents' outings are more limited, they're going to be staying more in their care center. Ancillary services and allied healthcare professionals, as well as family and friends, visiting will increase the already congested De Lavina streets, substantially increasing the daily traffic activity and impacting the limited street parking. It's a proposed 40-unit facility. I'm not entirely sure what the cap is for that. For example, if a husband and wife move in together and share a unit, I don't know what the cap is. But say, for example, if we have, one resident has two visitors a day, maybe a friend at lunch and a family member at dinner, we're talking 80 more vehicles coming and going. As well as, the next point I have is, the purpose of the facility like this is to provide a safe, healthy environment and to ensure quality of life. Services, events, and activities associated may include regularly scheduled social events, for example, 4th of July barbecue. Where families and friends are invited to come celebrate that particular event. Again, we're going to have an undisclosed number of vehicles coming and going simultaneously. Barbecue starts at noon, ends at 3:00. That's just an example. And they may have scheduled activities throughout the week that encourage families and friends to come visit the loved ones on-site. Other activities and services would include, like barber shop, beauty salon on-site, podiatrist, arts and crafts, exercise, music, singing, games. And some of these folks may have their own personal allied healthcare professionals, such as an occupational, physical, or speech therapist come on-site to do home-based services. Again, these would be subcontracted out from this facility, and it would be case-specific to each resident on-site. No way to know how many residents are going to be needing individual services at any given time. In reviewing the drawings, I'm not an architect, but the proposed driveway, the entry is 24 feet wide. But as you get down the driveway, it appears it's going to be about 20 feet wide. I'm not quite sure how deliveries are going to be done to the site. It's going to be quite narrow, and when you look down the driveway, it goes into the parking area. I don't know if there's enough turnaround space for delivery. I don't, I can't imagine that deliveries could be done curbside, but there will be a substantial number of deliveries to a facility such as this. They are going to provide three meals a day. That's 40 residents, times three is 120 meals a day, 850 meals a week. That's a lot of groceries to deliver. So all food, beverages, and associated meal preparation, such as cleaning supplies, paper goods, et cetera, deliveries will need to be done. I'm not sure curbside, or if they, I don't see anything in the plans where there's a delivery area. Other deliveries would include linens, like Mission Linen Supply, maybe biohazard removal, durable medical equipment for the residents, office supplies, pharmacy. And special occasion deliveries, such as Aunt Glass is turning 95, and she gets cake, and flowers, and balloons, and that type of thing. Lastly, with regard to parking, the residents will provide their own belongings in this facility. They bring in their own little bit of furniture, you know, beds, and maybe their favorite love seat, and some memorabilia, and pictures, and that type of thing. And it's because it is unknown how long these residents will reside in the proposed facility, there's a potential for great turnaround. It's not like a residential lease where you sign a lease for six months to a year. And again, no way of knowing where delivery of the furniture is going to be done. Is it going to be done street-side, or can it be done on the property? There will be a big move-in and a big move-out influx. And my last point is with regard to noise. Because of the nature of this proposed facility, to provide care for the elderly, usually around 80, 85 years and up, these are people suffering from Alzheimer's and dementia. I believe it will increase the frequency of first responders. Number one, first the fire department, and then, secondly, the ambulance. And no way of knowing what time of day that's going to happen, but I think that will increase with this type of facility. And I, for one, as a resident, in the summertime particularly, we had our, the most recent big fire down on Mitchell-Terrena and De Lavina with all the, at 3:00 a.m., with all of the, you know, the trucks, and the police, and fire trucks and stuff. And it's, you know, I don't look forward to waking up two, three times in the middle of the night with first responders. So, thank you very much, Madam Lodge and Commissioners.
Thank you. Questions from the Commissioners, for Ms. Barnier? Not seeing any. All right, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Commissioner Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since you do live in the neighborhood, I'm, and I have walked through it and driven through it, but not as much as you have, so your perspective's really helpful in this. The hopscotching of parking available at curbside is especially troublesome. And I agree, the traffic is getting worse as more commuter traffic is trying to find a way to get around downtown. I live downtown, and I've experienced the same thing on my street. My question is, have you considered, or do you think that your street would be at all interested in a resident permit parking program? That requires footwork. Someone has to go around with a petition and talk to the residents that live in that area. If you want to see what one looks like, the neighborhood around the Arlington Theater has one on the east side, on Arlington. So that's one item that I would suggest could be looked into for residents that are impacted by just this fact of life in downtown and what's happening with our curbside parking. My other question is, as you do look around for parking, do you have parking on your own property, or do you have to use street parking?
I personally have parking on my own property. The majority of the residents in the area do not. For example, today, Thursday, being street sweeping on the south side of the street, not one single parking spot on the north side. Not one to be had. Every single space is filled up. And I will add, I get up early and walk my dog on, say, Sunday morning. I'm out by 6:30, 7 o'clock. Looking between Pedregosa and Islay, there may be two open spots. And this is folks that aren't up and out, going out to work already. So it's already very, very, very consumed.
Well, just anecdotally, if you were to compare nighttime, daytime, how much of the on-street parking do you think are downtown workers who are using the street to park while they walk in to go to work? Or do you think it's mostly residents?
I think it's mostly residents, except for when we have special events, fiesta.
Parades.
Yes.
A once-a-month parade. Yes. Okay, thanks. Those are my questions. And your presentation is really very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's okay to make some comments now to staff? Is that all right?
Yeah.
Is that where we're going? Okay. I really just have three.
Since Ms. Barnier is standing there now, do you have any questions for her?
No questions for her.
All right.
Thank you. But great points.
Thank you.
I really have just three areas, as I read through the tables on issues. And it's, this is always an educational moment for me, too, when we do these, because it's kind of like, don't say anything, but wait till you see what you get back at the next meeting. But, and what I would like to see when it comes back again, are better responses that support your arguments, in particular on that the impact is less than significant or that it's potentially significant but mitigable. And those three areas have to do with the transportation, and not so much the incoming transportation having to do with parking and employee use, but more so what type of commercial or service deliveries, what size vehicles, what type of delivery schedule, and how that relates to both the applicant's plans on the lot and the situation on the street. If Jordano's is pulling up with a tractor-trailer that's 40 feet long twice a week to deliver food supplies, I'm having trouble finding that it's a less-than-significant transportation or circulation impact. And that doesn't mean I'm right, but I'd like to see some discussion or some support to that argument from you. Another one would be the noise mitigation on the three units that are apparently closest to the street. And I personally would like to see some information on why a acceptable mitigation for that is a permanently sealed window rather than something else. I understand that part of a negative declaration gives you the opportunity to just come up with a mitigation rather than be forced to suggest an alternative. But my personal feeling is it would, it just, it cries out for a question on why that's an appropriate mitigation point. And then, the third one is the tree, the big oak tree out in front. And in reading between the lines, I think, on the arborist's report and some of the staff material, personally, that, to me, is the iconic part of the block, is that tree. But then, reading between the lines, you get the feeling that the arborist is saying, "Well, it's really only in fair condition. It's been pruned poorly. It's not in really good shape," et cetera. And I would, again, question whether, or I would want to, I would want to see a little more information on the steps that are being proposed in the document, whether those are truly an effective mitigation that will ensure that, you know, as, whatever ensure means, ensure that that tree will survive. And then, I would really question the final line in that group that says, "Well, if it doesn't, we're just going to put three little trees in to replace it." And how that becomes part of the mitigation format. And again, I may be, I may be wrong in that my opinion is that it's not enough, but I'd like to see some argument come back in the responses that shows that it is. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I've been pointed out, I should have asked, is there anyone else that wanted to comment on this item in the public? Thank you. Let's see. Ms. Larson, Commissioner Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Bartlet and I made a field trip there after, I wasn't, I didn't go on the field trip with the rest of the commission, so we went, we went by and took a look at that tree and the properties and the conditions around there. I was wondering, first of all, I want to say, good for you, because so many times we get these sorts of environmental hearings, and no one comes up. And so, we, oh, okay. And it gets to go on. So I'm very excited that somebody actually read a document and took it upon themselves to come forward from the neighborhood and put out concerns. And so, that's a great thing that you've done. So, thank you. I wish more people would do it. And I have a question for staff. And my question is this. I know in the past, we've done, like, limited EIRs, limited scope. And I'd like to know if that's a possibility for this one, to address these concerns, which I consider very real, by the way.
Ms. DeBucks?
Chair Lodge and Commissioner Larson, we would do an EIR if there's evidence that any of the issue areas are significant, that haven't been addressed by mitigation or otherwise in the document. So we would need that information and feedback, either from the Planning Commission or if it comes from experts in the public. That's when we would make the determination during, when we're analyzing the comments that we receive, does this rise to the level of an EIR? Or can all the issues still be mitigated?
Okay, thank you. I bet if you're uncomfortable standing there, you can sit down.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did have a question for the applicant or for staff, which has to do with the idea that there will be activities for the residents. Are there going to be activities where they go off-site in a bus or shuttle? Or are all the activities presumed to be on-site, or do we not know?
Ms. Brodessen?
Chair Lodge and Commissioner Jacobs, I would like to let the applicant answer that. Ms. Julie McGeever is here from the architects firm, Hockhouser Bladder. And I'll go ahead and introduce her and let her answer that question.
Thank you.
Chair Lodge and fellow Commissioners, my name's Julie McGeever. I work for Hockhouser Bladder as a project manager on various different types of senior projects. Additionally, my husband and I own a 56-unit facility out in Galita called Heritage House. So I have day-to-day experience of how these projects run. This particular facility is projected to be for use of people that have memory impairment issues, severe cognitive decline, and, in some cases, hospice. issues, severe cognitive decline, and, in some cases, hospice. So it's generally the last two or three years of their lives. And unfortunately, the frailty, the physical frailty that is associated with that type of care usually involves providing as wealthy, excuse me, as, as rich of an environment within the facility as you possibly can. So therefore, we have 12 staff members on-site, and that includes both caregivers, as well as supervisors and activity directors, very involved in activities of memories and sensory, excuse my language, memory and sensory enhancement, as well as activities that allow them to be as independent as possible. Now, that being said, there are off-site trips, and they are in a facility's bus, and we will have a bus. And generally, in any given field trip, you'll have anywhere between four and six participants on any given trip. And they do do drive-by trips to parks and to certain special events or meals out.
Is it a kind of a weekly scheduled thing? Like, every Wednesday is shopping mall day, or every Sunday, go to church?
We haven't quite figured out the program yet. We haven't gotten that far in this, but I can just tell you from my own personal experience, let's say, for spiritual meetings, usually, we have a pastor that will come in, you know, whether it's for a Jewish High Holiday, or for a different type of religious experience. As it relates to meal service off-site, we have, at Heritage House, we have a lunch bunch that goes out every two weeks for lunch. And we have periodic, let's say, in any given month, we probably have two or three events where they will go out and, you know, engage, go to the beach for a barbecue, something like that.
And on the horizon, there are some significant improvements in medication and treatment for Alzheimer's.
Right.
It's very possible that people will live longer and have more mobility and more awareness, according to what I read in the paper. So your program may change. Your patients may be admitted and find that there are medications that they are responsive to. Maybe they won't be there for two or three years of hospice-like treatment. Maybe there will be more stuff for them to do, more opportunities for them to get out. Do you see any possibility for changes in your program over time?
That's, that's a very good question. I think the, the resident profiles is a function of the program that you set up for your facility. If I were to draw a comparison to Heritage House, just as an example, the units there are averaging 550 square feet for the assisted side, and on the cognitively impaired side, they're about 340 square feet. So you, you end up with a physical limitation of the type of service you can provide to a certain client profile. And this project, we, we did an exhaustive amount of study in the community, and we didn't just arbitrarily say, "We want to do assistive living," or "We want to have a residential care facility for the elderly." It was an analysis of what component is being underserved in this community right now. And in assessing what is offered at Valverde, Samarcand, Heritage House, Marvia, we found that there is a niche in the higher level of care those last couple of years, when people are extremely frail and still need a residential care environment. They're, they're not really candidates for skilled nursing, which oftentimes can be, I don't want to say less humane, but it, it doesn't really feed the soul, so to speak, and, and it's more of a hospital setting. There was a need for that type of programming specifically. And we actually, once we came up with a model, went again and surveyed with a number of the facilities here in town, they said, "That is the type of place we need." So that being said, we're, we're always going to be committed to that higher level of care. Just as an interesting statistic, about 50% of, of residents that would be in a facility like this would, would have a formal primary diagnosis of Alzheimer's. The other 50% of people that have a cognitive disability come from a lot of different other sources, Lewy body, frontal lobe dementia, Pick's disease. So I think you're always going to find that there's going to be a component of the population that is needing this type of care. And so we're really focused on that very specific usage.
And I had one more question, and this, you touched on in your, your study, your analysis, but 40 units on the site seems like a lot. In housing land-use terms, it's dense.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm wondering if you can explain why 40 units?
An important, an important thing to distinguish right up front, you know, unit, it's not necessarily a dwelling unit. These don't have kitchens or kitchenettes. They don't have, you know, associated garage or storage space. There's a communal kitchen, and it's much more like a dormitory situation. And that ends up being not only humane and, and economically feasible way of caring for a population, making sure that you have enough density to provide the services to them, but it also creates a much richer social environment, because, again, these folks are necessarily very, very frail. Most of them are using assistive devices, traveling more than five to 10 feet. It's very uncomfortable in some cases. So we have three small neighborhoods on this project. The first one on the first floor, it's got 10 to 12 units, and then that's replicated upstairs. And the intent is that there's a very limited travel distance to a common area where their quality of life is met in this area. And your hope is always in this type of program to create as less confusion as you possibly can. So familiarity is key. So these common areas really act as dining activities, socialization centers, and just by their very nature, it allows you to have a little more density on-site. If you were to compare it to, let's say, a comparable number of apartments, you know, in, in a given apartment, you could have two to three people. I think the average here is 2.78 persons per average apartment. So, you know, if you, if you look at that type of comparison analysis, you know, we're not talking per units, we're talking number of people. And to answer a question that was brought up by, by the earlier speaker, the intent is that this project would be capped at 40 beds.
All right, thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Bartlet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I think several of the points have already been touched on. I think the, the ones that need, I think, further amplification, for me, as the project moves forward, I think would be to delve deeper into the traffic. I'm uncomfortable looking at a 2008 traffic report that was done for a totally different application and a different use. We've heard from this particular transportation planner on other projects that have come before us, that the traffic numbers have changed substantially in the last three or four years. So I would like to see a more current study and make it applicable to this particular application, so that we really know what we're getting. And I would really like to understand the impact of deliveries and the shuttle van that is proposed as part of this project. As I look at the diagram, every single parking space is covered. In other words, it has low headroom, and the only three that aren't are compact stalls. So how would a van even turn around once it comes into the site? So I think there's some logistical things that need to be taken into account along with that traffic study. Also, the other comment that was brought up was the one on noise. Typically, what we've done on projects is have the windows closed with the mechanical ventilation option. I mean, that's traditional, so I'm, I'm fine with that as a mitigation. That's what we do in projects throughout town, so I'm not as worried about that one. And so few units on this particular project because of the deep site. I think that's not a, a big issue. And I think the one thing that does, I think, help this project is that it's clearly stipulated in the staff report that the residents do not drive. And I think, you know, listening to the explanations, I think that's more apparent. But I do want to understand the deliveries and the shuttle van more. I think that's really going to be the issue, and what happens with the shift changes, giving the timing of those and the number of employees. And I know we've looked at this on other projects. So I think that's really more the focus of the, the traffic analysis. And then lastly, I think, on the oak tree, I'm not satisfied with the mitigation on that beautiful, large oak tree of being three, five-gallon oak trees. I think that if we lose that oak tree, we've essentially lost all the oaks on this property. There's only one, but it's huge. So I think this project needs to mitigate such that we do not lose the tree. And if there needs to be a backup mitigation for replacement, I think at least the box sizes of the replacement trees need to be the equivalent number of inches as the diameter of the tree that's being taken out. I mean, this is a 46-inch diameter oak we're talking about, not a little one, so, and it's the only one on the site. So I would be looking for a little more analysis and a better recommendation on that mitigation. And those would be my concerns.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In order not to duplicate what my colleagues have said, I just want to underscore, I don't know if it's my confusion or concern, perhaps it's a combination of the number and impacts of employees, visitors, and delivery activities. This is a highly impacted neighborhood, and when we've looked at other types of care facility projects, they've been in areas of our community and in portions of real estate that could more readily absorb this type of day, day and night activity. And I just don't see sufficient vetting, so to speak, or perhaps answers to mitigating what otherwise, to me, seems to be significant impacts. So I think much more work needs to be done there, and perhaps a review of the design, the scope of the project in order to truly mitigate what I think is going to be a set of significant impacts to the immediate neighborhood. This type of facility is greatly needed in our community, there's no doubt about it. The question is the location of it, the scope of it, and whether or not, if it goes forward, more or less as described, is it really the right thing, both for those it intends to serve and family members, as well as the neighborhood? And I'm just not convinced at this point, so I would want to see some, some further analysis and reconsideration there. Thank you.
Any other questions from the other commissioners? Comments? I had a question for Ms. Weaver on the size of the units, and the MND says that 12, 12, there will be, well, as was pointed out, in some places, it says 12, some 13 would be maximum number of employees, which, from what you said before, seems to include some of the people that would be coming to provide the services that the, that Ms. Barney brought up, you know, concerns about additional people coming. But could you, could you let us know how, how large the units are for this facility?
Honored Chair and Commissioners, the average unit size is between 280 square feet and just a little over 300 square feet. And again, each would house one resident. And did you want a little more clarification on the employee breakdown?
Yeah, the number of employees in, in the different shifts. I understood, from reading it, I understood that the most there would be, would be 12 to 13 during the regular daytime shift, but that there would be less on other shifts? Is that, is that correct?
That's, that's a good question. You have your morning shift, and it starts at 7:00, and you have a certain number of caregivers. Our typical ratio is one, one caregiver to seven residents. And they get the residents up, make sure they've got their med supplies, do whatever health checkups they need to do. And then the caregivers also, there are, they're defined as what's called a universal worker, because they have such intimate knowledge of the resident themselves. What we found is that it is far more effective for them to then be in the dining, be part of the dining program with the residents. So we then don't have additional staff that is a whip person, that type of thing. So the other staff members are relegated to an administrator, a nurse, and the folks that would be preparing the food. And then, again, you know, your caregivers come in on a cycle from 7:00 to 2:00, you know, 3:00 to 10:00, and then the knock shift. Let me just speak to that. You have your morning shift and your afternoon shift, and you would have the same number of caregivers for each one of those shifts. The evening shift, you, you drastically reduce that number. You probably have about three folks on-site. At Heritage House, I have, again, 56 units, and I have three folks on-site at night. And in addition, between the hours of generally about 7:00 and 4:00, you have your administrator and your nurse and your activity director come on during that period of time. And that's slightly staggered with some of the, the dining staff that also comes on, some a little bit before. You have one key cook and a little bit after. We provided a chart to staff, which we'll make sure is available to you, where we break down all of the different positions, so you can see exactly when folks are coming on, and what, what is the, the critical mass, and at what period of time. And I think it's for three hours, and we have a total of 12 to 13 people.
Okay, thank you very much. These units are considerably smaller than the ones at Heritage House, from what I, as I recall, my notes say, those range from 340 square feet to 560. All right. Any other questions? Anything else? Don't see any lights on. I share the concerns that have been expressed by my colleagues, particularly the points that Commissioner Bartlet made. This does seem to be, does seem to have inevitably, although there, there are less employees coming and going than might have, from what Ms. Weaver just said, it, it will have a big impact on the neighborhood. And I would like to see more also on the parking and the trips, and the things that will impact the immediate area. Thank you. All right. There are no other comments or questions on this item? Thank you. Thank you for bringing this all up before us. All right, that brings us to item five, the administrative agenda, committee and liaison reports. First one is a staff hearing officer liaison report. Commissioner Larson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've had a couple of meetings, and of the meetings, the most significant project was the approval of the street frontage modification for, if you'll all cast your minds back, Harbor Hills. So we've had a merger of the six lots on Harbor Hill, in Harbor Hills, and, and the, the, we had a site visit, it was before Commissioner Schwartz and Commissioner Jordan were on, but...
First site.
Was it your first site? Oh, good. Then you went, oh, good.
Commissioner Jordan.
Cast it back. You've got the institutional memory now. Good. Anyway, first project. This is the turnout of the first project. Anyway, the, the staff hearing officer did approve the street frontage mod, which will serve three homes. So even though the mod is large, it will serve three properties, and it will allow some development to go forward. So, so I didn't call that up, but I thought it was significant. And the, they did have to propose a dwelling, very little grading. The export would be under the driveway. The, I don't know if the house would ever be built, but it's going to solve, solve the problem of Harbor Hills. So I felt that that was a great call. And then, to continue on, I need some help here. I am the liaison to the Sustainability Committee, and I have conflicts every meeting. Part of it this week, or this, this past was, or no, coming up, is I have the Sustainability Committee at 9:00, but I have the Historic Element Committee at 8:30. So I'm stacked up over O'Hare. And I, and the Sustainability Committee meeting is important, because it used to be called Solid Waste, and it wasn't very exciting. But now, the mayor sits, and, and Mr. White and, you know, City Council sits on this, and it's their committee. And so we, I wish I could give it its due, but I'm not able. So I, I'm hoping someone would volunteer to co-generation that committee with me, so that at least we get a report. It's not televised, and I'm not on a chain to receive minutes. I just receive notices. So I can't really give a report. So I feel inadequate, and like I'm not doing my job right. So I need some support there. And so that's, that's my dream wish, is that we could cover it all. And coming up on the next meeting is very important, because it is a review of all the sustainability stuff for the last... sustainability stuff for the last year. And that meeting is on the 17th. That's where I have my big conflict, 8:30 historic element, 9 o'clock sustainability meeting. So if somebody could cover that meeting, that would be great. Anyway, think it over and look at your calendars.
I don't see a lot of hands going up here.
Depends.
John Joseph.
No, I'm just asking. I, I'm actually beseeching for a favor because I love, you know, I've gone to two meetings. I went to one by accident at the Art and Public Places because it got, it was a movable feast. The, the time varied, so I, I reviewed airport art instead with my mouth shut, but, but it's interesting, you know? So I would please ask for a favor for this coming Wednesday so that, you know, so that we actually cover it. And then HLC, I haven't reviewed the last one, but I do know that the, that the hostel is, is going back and forth, so not done yet. And the, the youth hostel project, yes, hostel. And I think that's just about got it. Oh, that, oh, wait a minute, it doesn't have it. The historic element committee. You almost let me get away without that, or the writing. Anyway, Ms. Lodge was attending, and, and we had our two-hour meeting, and it was, it was very, it was progress, let's put it that way. We're making progress in language relating to goals, policies, and actions, so, so that's good. And working on some rewording and clarifications, definitions, lots of things like that. So now we are, we are going to meet again next Wednesday, as I told you, on the 17th. And looking forward to that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That brings us to other committee and liaison reports. Anyone have anything to report? Not seeing anyone coming forward on that. The water commission meeting for August was canceled. The airport commission for, meeting for August hasn't been held yet. Some of us went out to the new terminal with planning staff and saw the, the big issue with the cracks in the pavement, in the concrete flooring. The airport hired a Los Angeles firm which specializes in historic restoration to work on the cracks, to try to smooth them out and make them invisible. Most of them are at this point, but some still are not. And they're, they're still pursuing, you know, who's, who, how this will be resolved with the contractor. So if there's nothing else, that completes the planning commission agenda for today, and the meeting is adjourned.